Good evening. Thank you for joining us. It is 6:30. We're going to go ahead and call the Castle Hills Special City Council meeting into, or the regular City Council meeting into order and determine if a quorum is present. A quorum is present. We will proceed to the Pledge of Allegiance. Chief, will you lead us? Thank you, Chief. Ms. Tedford, do we have anybody signed up for Citizen Commons? Okay, in that case, we will hear that on 6:06 then. Next, we have the consent agenda. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Mayor, I need to omit the financials through October 31st. We had, we were unable to complete those in time for the packet for tonight. So we are going to take up those financials next month. So it's everything in the consent outside of the financial report, special fund balance reporting ending October 31st, 2021.
So 5.3?
5.3.
Yes, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, you willing to amend to that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Gregory? Okay, all in favor? Yes, sir?
We're asking to approve the minutes on December 9th, and there's one adjustment that I believe needs to be made. The result was would be the same, but the way it's written is incorrect. It's written that I made a motion to approve the application for, I disapproved the application for the coffee. And in fact, I didn't do that. I made a motion to accept zoning's recommendation, which in fact was the same thing to turn it down. But I think the process is, had I done the other way, we'd had to have them come here and we'd had to go through the whole process again. So I made a motion and it was passed that we approved the recommendation of zoning as opposed to the way it's written.
Okay, Ms. Tedford, is that something you can look into and confirm?
I'm good with that.
Okay, all in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council.
Mayor, can we go back to 3.1, the introduction of the code officer, new code?
Oh, yes, sir. I'm sorry. I missed that one.
On your, I wanted to be able to bring forward our new code compliance officer. As I had mentioned to you all via email and correspondence on November 23rd, Mr. Ron Myers was selected as our new code compliance officer. He is replacing Ms. Vasquez, who was selected as the new permit clerk. As you, as I mentioned to you all, we advertised for the position and upon her acceptance, we advertised for the code compliance. We had a number of applications, interviewed a few candidates, and after consideration by myself and at the recommendation of Mr. Zamorone, who oversees code compliance to select Mr. Myers as our code compliance officer. Mr. Myers was most recently worked this work for Tech Dot where he was a traffic engineer inspector. Prior to that, Mr. Myers worked with the city of San Antonio as a historic building enforcement officer. He's been involved in different code compliance activities and capacities for last 20 years. He believes in education-based manner of code compliance, but understands sometimes administrative enforcement is necessary. As I mentioned to you all, we believe that Mr. Myers would be a good fit for the city. And he's obviously been on board for about three weeks, almost a month, and has done a very good job. And he'll continue to do the good work that Ms. Vasquez had done as well prior to his arrival. Mr. Myers is a native San Antonio, is a graduate of Fox Tech, and he will continue to work with Mr. Zamorone and Ms. Vasquez moving forward over the next few weeks to get more and more acclimated to the role as code compliance officer. So I just want to welcome Mr. Myers aboard and if he has anything to say to you, go ahead.
Good evening, Council. Mayor, I'm really glad to be here, sir. So if you need me, you know where I'm at.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Welcome to Castle Hills. Okay, next up, we have item 6.1, Public Hearing on an Application Submitted by Zach Zurich 218 Hibiscus Lot C Block 5 Lewis Subdivision 2. According to the map or plat there of recorded in volume 20002, page 75, deed and plat records of Bear County, Texas for the proposed removal of two oak trees and one elm tree for access to an underdeveloped lot for the future construction of a new residence. It is 6:37 and we will open the public hearing. If there's nobody to speak on the public hearing, we will close the public hearing at 6:37. Next up, we have 6.2, Discussion and Possible Action on Application Submitted by Zach Zurich 218 Hibiscus Lot C Block 5 Lewis Subdivision 2 according to the map or plat thereof recorded in volume 20002, page 75, deed and plat records of Bear County, Texas for the proposed removal of two oak trees and one elm tree for access to an underdeveloped lot for the future considerer, future construction of a new residence. Mr. Rappley.
Thank you, Mayor. Last night, we held a Architecture Review Committee for this application. The ARC approved this 4-0 and recommended approval to the City Council. And I believe Mr. Zurich is here to speak on behalf of his application. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to him.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. Appreciate your time. My name is Zach Zurich. I am a resident at 104 Riviera Drive and am the owner of 218 Hibiscus Lane. As stated, I'm here asking for permission to remove two oak trees and one elm tree located within the access point of a flag-shaped lot that is at the back end of Hibiscus Lane. You'll see within the materials that were provided in support of the application that two of the trees, as indicated by the Arborist Report included in my materials, have some health issues. And so regardless of their location within the access to the greater portion of the lot, there, there's also an independent basis for their removal, I would argue. And then the other, the elm tree, although not listed on the Arborist Report, when you drive up to that point of the lot, considering the access to the lot is only 20 feet wide, there's really no way to get around or into the lot other than removing that particular elm tree. You'll see in the tree schedule, that's also included in the materials that, you know, the three proposed trees to be removed are out of, I think, a total of 20 or 17 that are within that strip into the greater portion of the lot. So I think this is a reasonable request. I also believe that the ARC had approval to do so with their vote pursuant to Section 4855, subsection 1, trees so located as to prevent access to the property, and I'll end the clause there. Again, if there was any other way to save these trees and also access the property, I'd go about it. But, you know, I've got to be able to access the greater portion of the lot that my wife and I purchased. So I appreciate your consideration. I would appreciate your approval of the ARC's recommendation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we accept the recommendation of the Architect Review Board.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Paul. Second, Mr. May, any discussion? All in favor?
We've got a discussion down there.
Mr. Gregory?
Are any of the trees heritage trees?
No, sir. They're, they're, all three of them are protected trees. My understanding is that heritage is a certain circumference or diameter. Now, all there, there are, I think on the lot as a whole, which is just under three quarters, I think there's two or three heritage trees and those are, those are, those will not be affected whatsoever. But yeah, the, the subject trees are protected trees. So that's why I brought the application.
Thank you. I looked at the information provided. I also drove by the lot and without driving into it, viewed it, and I don't see this to be a problem personally.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, Council. Thank you, Mrs. Zurich.
Thank you.
Next up, we have 6.3, Presentation and Update by the Comprehensive Plan Advisory Committee and LP Architects. Mr. Joyce.
Thank you, Mayor. As you all know, we've been working on this for a number of months now, the committee. And we've had the privilege of working with LPA. You know, they're planners and architects. And I believe to start us off this evening, Ms. McLean is going to kind of give us the, the big picture, where we are and what the next steps are. And then I believe Mr. Cavassos from LPA will walk us through the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council staff. We are well into this process of comprehensive planning and I'm very excited to report that after many, many, many months of very intense planning as a committee and brainstorming, we were able to embark on sort of the meaty part of our, our process in August when we held some workshops where we had different workshops on different topics that we're going to include in the comprehensive plan. Those were well attended and I think well received by citizens who learned a lot about the different aspects that we're going to include in our comprehensive plan. After that, we had some idea workshops where citizens were able to actually put their hands on maps of the city and mark places that they find to be troublesome and to mark places that they find to be very appealing in our city. And from that, LPA took that information and created some amazing exhibits to start us off on the trek of actually visualizing what the future could be like for our city. I will leave that part for LPA to talk about because it's very exciting. We were hoping by this point to have even a draft in the works, but once COVID sort of waned in April and May and the committee got busy with other work and, and other aspects of life, we are, are seeing that we're going to be about six to eight weeks behind where we were hoping to be. So we should have a draft sometime February, late February, early March is kind of our goal at this point so that we'll have something for you all to review early, early spring. Hi, view. We are intending to include some information in there on the repurposing of City Hall and to look at what that might look like, what the cost of that might be. We are also going to kind of do the opposite of that and, you know, maybe put a vision on what a new City Hall would look like so we can compare and contrast costs and opportunities when it comes to that. Of course, that's all visioning and dreaming, you know, that, that's years and years in the future plans. That's not tomorrow-type plans, but we feel it's important to put these visions on paper related to City Hall so that we can at least be looking at what our options are as we're looking at improvements that need to be made, you know, as repairs are needed at City Hall. We're also very intently looking at diversity of housing and diversity of housing for the committee means not just single-family homes, it means looking at all the different options that are out there, whether that's garden homes, patio homes, townhomes, condominiums, even apartments strategically placed in places where it is not, not a nuisance or a distraction to the single-family nature of our city. And of course, this is all dreaming too, but looking at the fact that downtown and other parts of town are becoming more dense with the way they are developing. And so we need to at least vision where we could put housing that is different than what we're used to so that we can plan it rather than just have it happen to us. So our idea is to give Council and ARC and Board and BOA a vision of what it could look like versus having people, developers or purchasers or buyers come to us and say, this is what we're going to do and ask away, we don't like that part of town for that purpose. So we are very intently looking at diversity of housing just as an option. Of course, that's all visioning, really. You know, it's not that that would happen tomorrow. This is future-type planning. If you all have any questions or comments, please don't hesitate to contact myself or Moretta Scott or Jack or any of the members of the committee with comments, questions. On the wall over here are the visual boards that we used the other night. And if you don't want to talk to anybody, but you want to leave a post-it note with comments on it, please do. They're on the wall for comments and we welcome all of the input. We had some very, very exciting input the other night. And I, there are a few other things that we wanted to talk about and I will turn the mic over to Mrs. Scott.
Thank you. Thank you, Council. I was really excited meeting with the citizens and that's another thing that got put off a little bit last week was our final meeting with citizens to get their input. The citizens that came were so excited and enthusiastic. One thing I wanted to touch on that was of particular importance to almost everyone I spoke with that was there that evening was if you look at LPA, they're looking at finding areas in town, land that the city already owns, whether, know how small they are, little pockets of land that the city already owns and developing them into usable spaces, walkability spaces, playplaces, green spaces, garden spaces, dog park spaces. And that is at very low cost to the city because the city already owns the property. So LVA will look at that, but I wanted to point that out to y'all as they give their presentation because everyone there, when they saw that board, they got so excited. And they were asking, can we have pickleball court? Can we have gaga ball court courts for our kids? What about some swing sets, little pockets here and there? I need someplace for my dog to go run. And it was really interesting because LP did find several of those, quite a few of those spaces and just the ideas that were flowing from the citizens of excitement on how to use what we already have existing in the city and just repurpose them just a little bit. So that excited me and I wanted to share that with y'all this evening. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Scott.
Hi, everyone. Is it okay if Leo helps scroll through the PDFs as we navigate them? Great. This is Leo Hernandez. I'm Federico Cavassos with LPA. Thank you so much for taking the time to check in on how the plan is going. It was great to hear the enthusiasm of Jack and Amy and Moretta. It's, it's great. We've had three sessions with your citizens and at every session, the number of attendees is almost doubled. I think at our last session, there were over 25 citizens here in person and others who attended online. That's something else that we're really proud of is that we offered a very accessible way of engaging from home, the safety of your own home or in person. The exercises were duplicated and the information was recorded physically or virtually using some great software that we have. So all that being said, we have had a number of meetings, five meetings. We've reviewed the content that we're about to share with you, with the committee, with citizens. And we're so pleased to review it with you today because our intent is to take your feedback along with what we heard from the committee and the citizens and take another pass at what you're seeing here. But we do feel very strongly about the process, how it's worked. It's been so great getting to know your people. Your people are so diverse in terms of, you know, socioeconomically, in terms of their interests. We had representation from all six neighborhoods. We had all different age groups. We had couples. We had single people. We had families. It was amazing. It exceeded our expectations. So we did start off by, you know, speaking at the speaker's forum about comprehensive planning and, and what that looked like before we did roll into the different kinds of engagement exercises that we designed for this in particular. And the exercises were very specific and very particular because they engaged people. You can see the images scrolling on the screen in all different kinds of ways by indicating opportunities and constraints on your, on your city on a map, by thinking just in terms of words and ideas about what the kind of vision of Castle Hills might want to be. And then they also helped us prioritize what was really important to the city. That's really where we started. All of the ideas flowed from our first meeting with your constituents. So that's just a bit about the process of how we've worked. To get into the exhibits, so there are seven exhibits that have been developed and there were certain themes that emerged as a result of our discussions. They centered around infrastructure, circulation, identity of Castle Hills and creating a new heart for the city of Castle Hills. You know, the, the tagline is, you know, creating Castle Hills. You have such an amazing place already with so much potential within it. And doing, doing this in a fiscally responsible way was incredibly important to us. So many of the things that you will see here today are just paint on the ground or paint on, on the, on a bridge or new signs. And they're not immense projects that you would have to undertake that would, you know, that would have an immense financial commitment. These are really high-impact achievable strategies. The, the first of which was a desire to have a, a city center, to have a place where all citizens can gather, all age groups. The location that's recommended is where we're standing now. You have an amazing place in that you have a park next to your City Hall, next to your police station. I mean, it's like a dream for a city of your size. So we began to imagine, you know, what that might look like if there is a new kind of town center in the city. And I want to credit the Parks Department as well for contributing to this exhibit. But, you know, there are, you know, two paths towards that. This exhibit illustrates one path, which would be thinking, thinking about what the potential a new facility could have in this footprint to sort of, you know, reinforce the access along Honeysuckle Lane, create a strong terminus at the end of that, but then create a facility that moves parking to the side instead of up front that has the ability to open up and address the park to the east that has the ability to co-locate your police and your civic functions. But then at the heart of it, this would be a community center, a place where citizens can rent out spaces to have yoga classes, to host conferences, to, you know, have a great indoor/outdoor experience that relates to the park. You also have that parcel of land just to the northeast, again, land you already own. You know, illustrated there is an all-purpose court with a little bit of side parking off of that that would have the ability of connecting to the park through that easement. So this is a pretty amazing asset you have here. And just thinking long-term, this is a great opportunity, a great place to start. This is the kind of work that could happen in a single place that would impact the entire city. It's great because it's also geographically, as you know, at the center of the city. So we just showed also some images of these kinds of spaces, what they look like, what that community center feel might be like, wonderful daylight spaces, high volume, a wonderful connection to the outdoors, the experience of arriving at city halls these days is changing. It's, it has the more of a hospitality feel in the terms of the way it's moving, this kind of gracious counter experience that you see on the lower left-hand side. All these things can be accomplished with the building you have now or with the idea of new construction, which would give you the opportunity to relocate the parking towards the west and towards the north. But then that commons itself, an amazing opportunity to create a space where you're, all the people who work so hard for your city can meet your citizens and a great active play space is currently being used, but there's more potential there. The next exhibit really speaks to your green infrastructure. Moretta talked about this a bit, but again, the cat, the impetus here was to find all of the properties that you own already and develop examples of how these underutilized spaces can become amazing spaces. You know, on Jackson Keller in Gladiola, for example, where you have a long linear easement. You know, we threw out the idea of this great kind of connector that connects east to west. The citizens came back and said, or it could be a great dog park, right? So, you know, this, these are, you know, minor interventions that have an enormous impact. Spaces that are more rectangular, which could be a community garden sort of in the upper right-hand side. So these are sort of the ideas on the right and the locations on the left. And hopefully you preview the exhibits before we came because they call out all of the street and intersections and locate them all on the map above you. So like on Antler, for example, sort of in the, the heart of the southern half of the city. If you'll scroll down to Exhibit 4 there, Leo, there's this space, right, that the city owns. That's at the end of a road to that end. This we have seen in other cities to be an amazing opportunity for an active play space for families. So many families live in that area that is right at the center of that portion of Castle Hills. There are so many walkers. You, you have, you have a city of walkers. We will say that. So the idea of this kind of playground node is a great way to repurpose that space. Similarly, your creek, which is, you know, concrete line has this, you know, this green space just to the northeast of it, back behind the commercial area, just here on the south side of 410. Just wanted to bring to you an example of the revitalization of creeks that we're seeing happening a lot in Houston, but in many other cities where there's major drainage infrastructure pieces that are sort of missed opportunities. And then the last is this idea of increasing your walkability by having a, the, the third exhibit from the bottom, by having the ability to reuse a drainage easement as a walking corridor, just that kind of meandering path idea in the northeastern area of Castle Hills. So these are low, low-cost ideas. The idea is to assemble a list of ideas for you. So when you have funds, when you have interest, that you have a playbook to work from. The identity piece and the walkability piece where we heard a lot about honeysuckle, right? Just south of us, how many cross-country runners run on honeysuckle? How many people their walking routes involve walking across honeysuckle and the underpass? So this is an opportunity to connect the north and the south side of your city. Again, with paint, with striping, with really intentional use of the right-of-way. The exhibit above you is a draft of the exhibit. We've since come to realize that a focus on the western half of that underpass would be really, really great since there's the turnaround, obviously, on the east. So rethinking, you know, painting the bridge, an opportunity to welcome people to the city of Castle Hills on either side, the north and the south side of that freeway. The opportunity to introduce more light, many cities, and you'll see in some of the exhibits below, the examples have found that these can be great spaces. They're great spaces where artists many times can come in, like this example, and develop really great streetlights that speak to the city, the ability to introduce planting on either side of the right-of-way and to give that space back to the people, right, to, to, to the walkers, to the bikers, to the people on scooters. So the way that that right-of-way is being used, you know, that's a really important piece of this revitalization. So we're developing a guide for you to look at that area. The sort of walkability is a major topic that we heard from the citizens, from every citizen. This is an area where we had unanimity. You cannot under, over-invest in your pedestrian mobility. It would not be, you know, disappointment to your citizens. So we began by outlining and understanding where people are walking. They're walking everywhere. They're walking in every neighborhood. There are barriers to where they're walking in your major thoroughfares that cut through your city, like Northwest Military. But you know this because you, you live here and you see that. So a key piece would be being really thoughtful about your large corridor roads, your West Avenue, your Northwest Military. So we developed a series of rules of thumb or guides for how different intensity corridors can be redeveloped to have either physically separated sidewalks and bike lanes to have, so that would be on the right, that would be the most divided situation, which Northwest Military and West would benefit from, from your arterial connectors, which is that mixed traffic exhibit there, which proposed separating the sidewalk from the roadway and beginning to allocate a portion of the roadway to bikes. And the last is the residential road, which is commonly what you see right now where your people, your bikes and your cars are sharing the road. What we heard from your citizens, the last meeting that we will update here is they would love to see in key areas, portions of the residential roads be striped off to discourage, like to create a lane for people to walk. We think there's enough width in many of your roads to make that happen, just to create a little bit of a separation for the people walking on the street, right? They're not separated by a curb. So that's something that we're looking at there. We, we also learned just at the last meeting about a great walking loop that happens on the southern side of the city. So we're going to be diagramming that on top, on top of this map so that you understand where people are walking and you can begin to invest in the most thoughtful way. So that's a bit about pedestrian mobility. I'm going to pause here and see if anyone has any questions or comments so far. There's, there's, I think, three more exhibits.
Have there been any attempt to estimate what this would cost and how long it would, how long it would take to implement it?
Mr. Gregory, that's a really great example. Cost estimating is not a service that we were contracted to provide. We would be happy to assist you with that if you're interested in a particular project. There's many diff, the idea was to create many different intensities of financial commitments. So many of these are, are very minimal. Others are larger. And if there's a particular interest, we can And if there's a particular interest, we can develop more detail for you with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next exhibit. Is about, this says bikeway, but it's actually any. You know, it could be scooters as well, but there is an enormous network in the city of San Antonio. Of bike lanes, bike paths, parks. And you know, Castle Hills sits right in the middle of that. So everything in green, those green lines that you see are bike lanes that are really close. To the city. So the, the first impetus was people would love to be able to tap into that network to get to Hardburger Park. Safely to get to MacArthur Park, you know, to be able to tap into that network. Right now Castle Hills is a little bit of a missing link in some of the bike lanes. So where can we make those connections? So. The other really important thing about bikes and scooters is that they create great connections for your schools. So this exhibit overlays in orange, all the schools that are immediately adjacent to Castle Hills. Or within Castle Hills and begins to recommend in terms of how bold those lines are. Where we see bike infrastructure being the most meaningful, primarily along Northwest Military to get you up north. Along West Avenue, along Lock Hill Selma, Jackson Keller, and then those in orange are great connectors. For that bike network where just simple striping on the road would be really, really powerful. Bike lanes are fundamental to multimodal cities, to providing access to different socioeconomic groups. And that's something that we heard many people get around by bike and we would like for them to do that safely. Some way, different ways of having bike infrastructure again is just through creating bike lanes on the road through the way that you stripe and that you paint. Dedicated bike lanes that might be separated off a curb like in the lower right hand example there. You would need to think about intersections at roads. So just a guide there on the lower left hand side of what that might look like. That, you know, the best bike infrastructures have signals. In your traffic signal. So when it comes time to replace any traffic signals, something to keep in mind, you know. If you have a bike lane there, that helps improve the ability for citizens to use bikes in your city. The next exhibit is. Is about a concept. Creating a main street in the city. So it's about thinking about your. You know, the heart of your commercial corridor, Northwest Military Highway. The concept that was brought to us and then was explored more. Was the idea of a complete street. A complete street is one that favors people, bikes, cars, trees and connections. Complete trees are great because they connect residential areas to commercial areas. They allow traffic. To move very well, car traffic to move very well at a slower speed. Tends to be a fast, you know, road Northwest Military. So we did, you know, recommend that as a great complete street. That exhibit on the upper left hand side and on the right hand side. Talk about how a sidewalk, a bike lane and cars can all share the right of way. This is text, a text dot road. The committee has talked to text out there. You know, they love to hear that the city is thinking this way. They are looking for guidance. They, you know, were surprisingly receptive as far as we heard. Jack can speak to that. So we see that there's real potential here to think about Northwest Military. In a, in a new way, that kind of a road attracts more business. It attracts more opportunity for different kinds of housing. We took a look at the Northwest Military West Avenue as a starting point, that intersection there, analyzing the buildings there, analyzing the parking. Understanding that there's even more opportunity just at that intersection right there, you know. Make that the heart of your commercial corridor. So just some observations about the opportunities there, which you can look into in, in more detail. We're staying relatively high level today. The last exhibit, I believe, is one that relates to zoning and land development. And it begins with this idea that there is the opportunity. To think about creating opportunities within your city. Castle Hills is primarily a single family residential right now with commercial along your major thoroughfares and, you know, other. You know, the, the Boy Scout Park, et cetera. But we worked with the committee and the citizens to understand, okay. What opportunities are there for your land use and for your zoning? And identified key properties where the concept of transitional zoning could be introduced. Transitional zoning is a concept that allows a, a bridge between single family residential. Which tends to be quieter, slower traffic and, you know, a high traffic and commercial areas. What it does is it eliminates a, not eliminates, but it helps reduce kind of red flags that. Interested property owners or developers or business owners might see in a property when they see that it's owned single family. So it begins to create opportunities to rezone through transitional zoning. So it opens up the ability for more commercial or denser housing. In some cases such as along Gladiola, which was an area that the committee felt. May lend itself to a denser housing, given its proximity to commercial. But as you can see, those areas in orange are those which are, are proposed to have this transitional zoning. They're primarily along Northwest Military, along west, along Jackson Keller, where. You know, high traffic roads that have more opportunity for commercial or denser housing. There's also recommendations for a focus on the commercial areas on the tip of the southern cone there. And on the eastern corner, right just north of four ten, to be really thoughtful about the commercial spaces that are there now. That there's certainly more opportunity there for. Just, just thinking, you know, thinking meaningfully about those zones and how they work commercially. Something that we heard and we wanted to communicate to you. So I believe that's the last exhibit. Hope it didn't take too long, but love to hear any feedback, comments or questions.
Thank you, Mr. Cavassos. Give us a lot to.
Yeah.
To absorb council. Do we have any questions, Mr. Joyce? Do you have any, any comments?
Let me just, if I may, talk about the text meeting we had a couple of weeks ago with. Ms. McLean, Ms. Scott and myself, we met with the text planners. And talked about some of these ideas. We took these exhibits with us that Fernando and Leo had prepared. And somewhat to our amazement, they were open to a lot of these ideas. They were not open to anything on Northwest Military that might suggest losing a lane of traffic. But they were open to the idea maybe of squeezing the lanes down a little bit so that we could get a bike path or a sidewalk or something. And even more amazing to me was that they were. They were open to us making use of the right of way that exists on either side of Northwest Military for these purposes. Apparently they don't have plans to widen military, which they would anticipate a battle with that, of course. So they don't have any plans to widen it. And we just have to define what that right of way is with some of the committees trying to do that right now with text dots help. But anyway. You know, it's the possibilities to me on Northwest Military are just wonderful to think about. If we could have some of that right away to work with. So anyway, I just wanted to clarify that Fernando mentioned that. I just want to, Federico, excuse me, mentioned, I just wanted to.
Mr. Isbrand.
Just a couple of thoughts. First of all, Mr. Joyce, I'm sorry that Ms. McLean, Ms. Scott left because. I would like to personally express my appreciation to the three of you and to the committee for the extraordinary work that has been done here. This is a example of a really well thought out approach that has taken months and months to, to do. And it has considered the opinions of many people and has engaged this community. And I believe that's the way. Progress in this shitty city should take place. So thank you very much for the work that you have done there. Ms. McLean characterized this in her opening comments by saying, this is all dreaming. And yeah, there's some things we may be able to do now, some things we may be able to do in the future, but. I would sure say, keep on dreaming because that's, that's the way we're going to keep doing good things in this city. One observation I did want to make though, that I'm sure as you all put together, the actual report that you'll bring to us. Is that we, there's focus to your comments, Mr. Joyce, and to the other comments that have been made. About looking at Northwest Military as the heart of our commercial corridor, and I can absolutely see why. But I hope that in the process of looking at this holistically, we don't forget the south side of Castle Hills.
Yep.
And all the important things that are really needed there to reengage, to reinvigorate Jackson Keller. And the hundreds, if not thousands of children that are walking down those streets every day. And how we bring new neighbors to those communities too. And I know this is all in your head. We didn't touch on it tonight. I'm sure we'll see it in the report. But I felt that it was important to mention that, although you did reference Gladiola and I appreciate. Seeing all that beginning to take place. So again, I just want to say thank you to everyone involved. This is extraordinary work and it makes you feel. Extra proud to say that you're a resident of Castle Hills. So thank you.
Mr. May.
Just a brief comment. Thank you for directing this because I think you've done a wonderful job. In the last couple of months, I stumbled on something that was quite interesting. In the 1970s, a noted landscape architect. That also designed at the Trinity University did a plan for the city of Castle Hills. It was never executed. It's my goal to dig that up and if we can reproduce the copies, I want to submit it to you. I've also agreed with counsel and Joyce to join our historical society. With some of our ideas to, to make it as comprehensive as possible. So I just wanted to let you know that I want to be collaborative with this effort.
Excellent. We would, we would love to see that plan.
Thank you, Mr. May. I'd personally like to thank Mr. Joyce, Ms. McLean, Ms. Scott and you as well, Mr. Cavassos. I know that's been a little bit of a labor of love to get this done. And obviously this is. Kind of pie in the sky plans for the city, but so much of what we've done in Castle Hills has been piece by piece as we have it. Without any plan for what the next piece will be. And I think having this and the subsequent documents will really help us be able to. Put together a plan of where we want the city to be in 10, 20, 30, 40 years. And. That way we're actually making progress towards it. Pragmatically and there's a plan. So I thank you so much for everything that you all have done. When you say a complete street, I think of Broadway. Is there any other streets that you can reference that, you know, we could put our eyes on and get a real?
Actually Broadway is not yet a complete street. It will be. They are working on the, you know, the southern and south of the freeway to downtown. That will be a great example of a complete street. South of the freeway. It will not have bike lanes north of the freeway. So if you give it a few months and drive down that street, that's a great example. We can send a few others your way as well.
Thank you. And one last question. Was there any discussion regarding underneath four ten? Specifically between West Avenue and Vance Jackson, or I guess Jackson Keller. I've talked to. Text and they were amenable to doing something down there that wasn't completely permanent.
So we, we were trying to use the honeysuckle example as an example of how underpasses can be revitalized. It was our intention that the concept of, you know, making a pedestrian connection there. That there were other opportunities along the other two underpasses that are within the city. So we did hear that, that's some feedback actually that we heard at our last meeting. That we intend to implement. So, but what were you thinking in particular?
And I, I don't have ideas. I just, I think too much sometimes to my own detriment, but. I mean, it's obviously a lot of land that could be utilized. And like I said, I had preliminary conversations with text dot and. They're amenable to something that's not too permanent. Obviously they need to have access. But something that, you know, a ride share parking area, something that we could capitalize that and. Have an anchor in Castle Hills. That way people want to go shop and want to go. Spend their hard earned money in the city of Castle Hills.
Well, this is great. And this is exactly why we wanted to talk to you before this is completed. So we could hear ideas and comments like this. Let us look at it a bit more.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do we have any other comments?
Thank you, everyone. It truly has been a pleasure. Your citizens have been great to meet with. The committee has been great and thank you for. Allowing us to help you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cavassos. Okay. Next up, we have six point four presentation and discussion from Bridgehead IT regarding the assessment conducted on the city of Castle Hills. Information technology, infrastructure, possible executive session pursuant to Texas government code. Section five, five, one dot zero eight nine deliberation regarding security audits, Mr. Rapley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. I wanted to go back, obviously during our budget discussions when we spoke about. Some issues with our IT infrastructure and some of our infrastructure aging. And some of the things that we needed to work on. Part of that was developing a. Almost a five year plan or a prioritized plan multi-year to address our IT infrastructure. What I had done is we are, we are working to engage a. A IT support service for next year, but also this is separate and above. Bringing Bridgehead in as a third party consultants to do a deep dive on our IT infrastructure. And they have provided a site observation report and obviously a roadmap with priorities. And next steps, as you recall during the budget, we carved out a certain amount of money. Which was a transfer from the American Rescue Funds that I have carved out and appropriated in the FY twenty two budget. And so as we go through this project, manage the needs to improve our ITM structure. That's where will the funding will come from. But right now what I'd like to do is introduce William Shelby. He's the director of client services at Bridgehead. Him and his team put together this site observation report and I'd like for him to go through. Some slides here that talks about sort of the nuts and bolts of our infrastructure and how we can approve. If there's anything we've put language that needed to discuss security audits and relations to. Our IT components, we can go into executive session. But I think right now we're just going to keep it high level and talk about. How we're going to address our IT infrastructure over the next year. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Shelby. Okay. Okay. At the recommendation of our city attorney, it's probably better that we do this in closed session. Mayor.
In that case, it is Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty one, seven eighteen. We will now be going into executive session. Oh yes, pursuant to five, five, one dot zero eight, seven deliberation regarding deliberation regarding security audits. Eight, nine. I'm sorry, five, 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 one dot zero eight, nine. Thank you, Mr. Fletcher.
Okay, it is eight twenty-four Tuesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-one, and we are back from executive session with no action taken. We will proceed on to item six point five deliberate regarding an offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect that the city council seeks to have locate in the city and with which the city council is conducting economic development negotiations, possible executive session pursuant to Texas government code. Section five-five-one dot zero-eight-seven deliberation regarding economic development negotiations and pursuant to section five-five-one dot zero-seven-one Texas government code consultation with attorneys, Mr. Rapley.
Thank you, Mayor Council. This item is a continuation of our previous special meetings on a potential development. An apartment housing and we have Mr. Plummer here from Bracewell and Ms. Blakely Fernandez here from Bracewell as well to continue and provide any questions that council may have on this particular development deal. I'll go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Plummer.
Thank you, Mr. Rapley.
Since we met last week and went through this. I wanted to try and lay out for y'all a schedule of activities. To try and make sure everybody's kind of on the same page as to where we're going and what we're doing. And and what we think is a reasonable schedule. To be able to beat both the developers needs and to be able to meet your needs and to inform your community about exactly what's going on. So if you'd like, I'd be happy to try and lay out the basis of a schedule for us to move forward and give you a kind of an overall timeline of what I think our actions will be. What we'll be requesting to try and do and also to try and touch on. Where you will be in the decision-making process. Because I think there is some misunderstanding. About what the council is being asked to do and when the council will be asked to actually formally move forward, approve. And I kind of wanted to go through what what we thought would be a reasonable schedule. To lay this out and I think it meets everybody's timeline. So if that's okay with you, I'd like to proceed with that.
Yes, sir. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Tonight, we're going to ask you to authorize Bracewell to begin working on the concept of a community development plan. We are asking you to authorize us to begin because there were two things that I think we need to accomplish and likely we'll go through it in more detail. But I think it's very, very important that we begin to coordinate the community development plan with the overall master plan that was presented to you tonight. We don't have enough detail to address those kinds of things at this point. We need to be able to have access to the people who are working on that. And we need to begin to integrate those concepts. The one thing we don't want to do is to bring forward a proposal to you that is somehow in conflict with your overall master plan. And so we'd like permission to begin working. And then the second thing I got to tell you is you've got a lot of input as to what that's like, that is like, and so we'd like to prepare a draft and bring it back to you so that you can start to address the parameters of what that should cover. You'll recall that we're doing the community development plan because that plan will then give you the power to consider housing within your community. And so that's I'll let likely go into more detail, but that's step one for tonight. And what we'd like to do is we'd like to have what I call a town hall meeting. My guess is is that it will be structured as a city council work session. We'd like to invite your citizens to come to that meeting. We'd like to do another general presentation to make certain that everybody knows what's going on and we're communicating what's being looked at. We'd like to do that in early January. The things that we are missing and cannot answer are, I got a whole laundry list of them. And so we aren't going to address these things at the first meeting. We're just going to give an overview, answer any questions. But we owe you a traffic study, an engineering study for drainage. We owe you a a discussion of how the proposed development project fits into the master plan and what the master planners think about this development project. We ultimately will need to provide you with a term sheet. And we need to provide you with an analysis of what the taxes might be on this property. If you don't go forward versus what the income from this property is. The other thing I want to touch base on, Mr. Gregory, I did contact the lady both by phone and by email. But I have not heard back from her yet. I will I will contact her again and try and clarify that position. And then I guess the last thing is is that now we're going to run this by your financial advisor. So we'll want to have input from your financial advisor. Our thought process is that we will have all of that by mid-January, at least in a preliminary format. You'll recall the lady with the traffic study last week said she would have a written final traffic study in February. So we want to get preliminary information from her. We think we can do that sometime in January. We all recognize that the city has to describe what is needed for the TIA. She's not going to start that process with the city until January. Then she's going to do traffic counts. So I suspect we're talking about late January. Once we have all this information compiled, we would like to come back and do another presentation and try and answer some of the questions that you have had. If you like, we could certainly do another town hall meeting if the citizens have questions, more than happy to share with them. At somewhere in January, I would like to ask you to create a public facility corporation. The reason I want you to create a public facility corporation is it's just a tool in your tool drawer. Takes me a couple of weeks to get that done. I'd like to get the administrative part behind us. Public Facility Corporation may be created, but I'm not asking you to have a meeting of the Public Facility Corporation in January. We need to get you the information. We need to hold our public meetings before the Public Facility Corporation ever meets. Then what I am expecting is that mid-February, we would actually get back a completed traffic study. All of our information should be complete by mid-February.
Plummer, can I interrupt you real quick?
Sure.
You're throwing a lot of dates at us. You're going to get us this in paper?
I am. I will get you a written calendar. And and we'll, you can hold on to it, publish it on your website, whatever you want to do with it, but it's what we would propose in terms of a of a meaningful schedule to move forward.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask you to create the PFC. When we have everything complete, we have a term sheet that you're satisfied. We would hold a Public Facility Corporation meeting. That Public Facility Corporation will have a board of directors that consists of the city council. It will hold its first meeting. At its first meeting, we will ask it to consider a a term sheet for this project. And and it is a non-binding term sheet. So that will be the first actual action towards this project that you will actually take, and it's a non-binding action. So at that point, if something comes up, you're not committed to the to the project in any way. Once the developer has the term sheet, I suspect that they will go out and either purchase the land or they will have to make a significant additional investment to buy an additional extension. I suspect that will happen in March. Then they will go to the banks and they will go to the equity markets and they will raise their debt and equity. I'm predicting that that will take till June to get accomplished and we would bring back to you definitive documents. At that point, we would ask you to approve this transaction or to deny the transaction. And it is only when we are in a position where we've answered all the questions and we have definitive documents that I think you would be in a position of approving something that would theoretically bind this city to do a transaction. So lots of public information, lots of statistical information to come. You will all see that term sheet to come, none of which will be you will be bound to. We're going to ask you to take the administrative steps to move these things along, none of which will be done at your cost. All all of these items will be paid for by the developer. And then we would hope that at the end of February, we would have a set of business terms for you to consider. That will also be non-binding. So you will not be to a binding financed project till probably June. So I wanted to lay that out so that everybody had a little better handle on what we're doing and how we're proposing to proceed. And and so that, you know, you've asked a lot of questions and I know there's some frustration with not having the answers at this point. But I wanted you to understand that that all we're trying to do is get permission to go out and do the things we need to do so we can answer your questions so you can make intelligent decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Plummer. I I personally appreciate you and the folks at Vaquero for entertaining our radical approach to transparency and making sure that we're doing everything that we can to ensure that our citizens know what's going on. And I think, at least me personally, realizing the the runway for this project gives us a little bit of peace of mind that there's plenty of opportunities to make sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's. Mr. May, do you have a comment?
I have a motion.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council authorize Bracewell LLP to prepare a community development plan for a community development program for the city of Castle Hills.
I I appreciate your excitement to move forward, but I believe that's six point six. So if you want to hold on to that, we'll see if there's any more conversation. Do we have anything else on six point five?
And if I may, just so we get on record.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Brymer, are you okay with that? What I've outlined? You're prepared to go forward and move forward with your traffic analysis, et cetera? Okay.
Okay. The one other thing is, Mayor, to the extent that undertaking these activities creates a cost at the city, we just need to know what it is so that we can get it approved to get reimbursed.
Perfect. Thank you. Let me open up six point six and we'll go from there. A discussion of possible action on authorizing Bracewell LLP to proceed with preparation of the community development plan for a community development program for the city of Castle Hills. Before we proceed, I know we do have somebody here that signed up to speak, Mr. Bella, please.
Mayor, what I wanted to add from the last item in that discussion is we are going to have a dedicated link on the website. Everything about this project information will be housed in this one link on the front of the website. So all the residents can see all the documents and anything pertaining to this project moving forward.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rapley. Mr. Bella?
Thank you very much, Mayor City Council, and I wanted to start with comments that basically thank Vaquero and Bracewell for their public face in meeting us on October second. That's a great start. I appreciate that, just as I appreciate Blakely bringing to us the concept of the Rural Residential District, which y'all approved a couple of months ago. I appreciate that very much as well. And I want to address y'all, especially in terms of thanking you for your perspicacity, for your willingness to investigate and your caution. I would appreciate, I I appreciate Councilman Isbrand's questions about the change in name grass egress on La Cellema to what was Winston Lane and how that might affect the citizens. And do we know? I appreciate Mr. Joyce's questions about the generation of hourly traffic volume estimates which you posed on December seventh to the engineer then. Mr. Councilman Paul's question, when will the in-depth traffic analysis be available, which I think we've just had basically question answered. I especially appreciate Councilman Douglas Gregory's comments about the traffic analysis presented on December seventh. Traffic changes due to the proposed development is likely the topic of greatest concern to the citizens living west of West Avenue. How will Vaquero-based traffic change traffic loads and speeds on South Winston Lane and throughout the rest of west of west? The financing strategy you also mentioned prompted you to ask, I don't know what to ask. Many citizens feel the same, given the complexity of the public finance corporation, which is likely new to all citizens. Thank you, Mr. Gregory. So I am delighted that Mr. So I am delighted that Mr. Plumber talked in terms of one or two more public meetings, town halls as they were. And I definitely support that because this is going to be as new to the citizens as it has been to council. And you've had three great meetings, at least special meetings on this topic. And I think the runway for takeoff is laid out. I don't know. How long it will be before the plane actually leaves, but the bottom line is. We also, the citizens need to be sure we understand and have questions answered. So I would encourage those town hall meetings to be. Basically set up for citizen questions and answers. Certainly they can be here or wherever, but. I know that is the citizen back and forth. When there's engagement, that is what is valuable to us and which was of great value on Octo- October 2nd. Thank you again for that. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bella. Mr. Rappley?
Mayor, have no comments?
Okay. We have any comments, questions, motions? Mr. Isbrand?
Could, could I ask you a couple of questions? Or Ms. Fernandez? Whichever we'd like. I, I want to make sure that we have heard it clearly and that we have laid this out clearly for our community on this. You cited a couple of things tonight that would be the timeline that we would go along. If I capture this correctly, then the, the development of this community development plan. In no way obligates us to proceed with this project, correct? Okay. Likewise, the creation of a public finance corporation would not obligate us to proceed forward.
Yeah, public facility corporation.
Thank you. Thank you for claiming that. Likewise, the investment that the. Developer would make to produce a traffic study and for us to receive that, a preliminary engineering study would not have any bind us in any way to this project.
That's correct.
The other question that I have is related to, I know you were in the audience tonight as the comprehensive plan was put forward. I'd like to hear your thoughts in terms of the community development plan. And do you see these as if we are to approve this action tonight as being an integrated process? Or are we looking at two separate things in your approach to this?
So I think that's a good question. The timeline that I heard. From the committee chairs on the larger planning process sounded like that's a little further out, right? That you're looking at February or March to have your final plan. Your planners have done a lot of work already. They've taken public input and they seem to have some thoughts on the commercial corridor. And, and so it would make sense in my mind that the community development program be produced. With the planners. We, I mean, we'd like your permission to work with LPA on this piece so that you, we're not bumping into. Anything that wouldn't support the efforts that they're doing or the comments and the input that they've already taken. This should complement that and not be separate from it. But the community development program, it, it's not as comprehensive as what they're working on. This is likely to be a two-page document. It's going to identify. Whether you have the types of housing diversity that you have in the city, what might be surrounding the city. So we'd lay out a geography for the, the program that could be as big or as small as you want it to be. And then we'd set some priorities. And I know that there's some concern from neighbors here tonight. And they didn't mention it in the planning process, but the rural district could be identified in the community development program. As an, as an area to be protected, right? That, that you want to make sure that the traffic and the drainage and other things are not going to impact. That neighboring area. That, that's the kind of thing that we could be cautious with in the community development program.
So what I heard tonight, that the only point at which we would be bound to anything. Would likely be this coming summer, June, July, if we chose to move forward. But all these incremental steps and all these reports that would be produced, that would be provided to us. Are in effect informational for us and do not bind us or commit us to proceed with the project until that June, July discussion.
Until you approve the final documents. That's right.
May I address two things associated with that? One is. I don't know, and Mayor, you're going to have to, Mr. City Manager, you're going to have to tell us. Whether looking at. The community development plan is within the scope of your current master planners. And if it's not, then we'll need an estimate of, of, of what the cost would be to have them assist with that. Cause they have to be integrated. And so if you will get that cost, I'm sure Mr. Breimer would be happy to make a contribution to the city to pay that cost.
Thank you.
The only other thing I wanted to add real quickly. Is I do want to clarify one thing in what you said. You aren't bound to anything. But you have the right to say no at any point. And so I think that's really important. I've laid out this schedule. We could get to the next step in the schedule and you as a council could say, you know what? Not going any farther. So you, you're not only not bound. You have a right to stop this process at any time you wish to stop this process and to walk away.
And I appreciate the fact that as you've laid out that timeline, that you have built into that. A couple of town hall meetings or community gatherings so that the community, this is a very complex, as we would all agree to. And I'm sure to our residents, it's, it's extremely complex. I appreciate the effort that's being made. To communicate effectively with them, to be transparent about that. And for them to understand exactly where the yes or no, the bind or not binding position is on it. Thank you.
The community development program, the final adoption of that requires an actual public hearing. So adjacent to one of those town halls, we'll need to open and close a public hearing to finalize that, that program.
Mr. Paul?
I look back at the schedule that was provided us on how this would proceed. And the truth of matters, it looks like we've been on target. Now, I sensed a little bit of frustration, maybe last time. With maybe the developer not being sure that we're sure, but according to the schedule, we were pretty much on target. It's new to us and I would like to thank the developer and his team for putting up with us while we go through this process. It's new to us. We have a lot to consider. We have a lot of things to, to take into account and I'm sure. You have recognized that and. Where, you know, I've made a comment earlier. We're moving up this process like a ladder, one step at a time. And we're trying to make it work if it works. We're not going to try to put a peg in around hole. But if it works all the way up the line, then, then that's good for everybody. And again, I want to thank the developer and his team for, for kind of putting up with us or taking the time with us or whatever the case may be.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Mr. Gregory?
PFC, as it was developed in San Antonio, was specifically originally. Targeting what areas? And why?
Mr. Gregory, all I can tell you is from the housing perspective, okay? So there may have been some other PFC activities I just wasn't a part of. From a housing perspective. Ivy Taylor, we brought her a tax credit deal. And Ivy said, I don't want any more low income. I want a market rate deal. And we tried very hard to bring her a market rate deal and we could not get one to work. We developed the PFC because the property tax exemption. Enabled us to deliver a market rate project to an area that otherwise would not see one. And that's how it developed.
So you're saying that you could not, if you had the money. You could not come into this city and just build a building because you do not believe the market could sustain the building itself?
Interestingly enough, the real issue was. In parts of town, there were not comparables at the rents that would need to be charged. In order to justify building the building. This happened to be on the east side at the time. And there were not any. At that time, market rate products that could justify the rents. And so it is correct to say that way back when we started this process. Which was probably in 2013, 2014. There were not, there was no way to build a high-end market rate product. I will also tell you that many, many of the deals that we have done have suffered from that same fate. You could, there was not a comparable in an area of town that justified, say, a $2 rent. And so you could come in with a public facility corporation, make a deal work at a $1.75 rent because of the tax exemption. And so that's how these deals started. Today, while there are some pockets that are doing market rate, as a general rule, the developers will tell you. It is extremely hard to do a market rate product in the city of San Antonio. In an area other than the Pearl. And other than Alamo Heights and maybe the medical center. And I'm told the medical center is very difficult because of land costs. And, and our developer can come up and address that more if you want.
You said you were going to. Well, I'll put it this way. In any way, shape or form of financing of this, are you putting out a limited partnership?
Uh, no. I mean, they will.
So they'll be doing a limited partnership?
It may be a limited partnership or an LLC. Yes.
I've dealt with a lot of, a lot of limited partnerships. They're very interesting. It, it's funny, the, this timeline you put out, and I appreciate it. There's a sense of inevitability about it, but you have it cloaked in the, it's in the innocuous form of an administrative step. It just strikes me, the further you go, we move into these administrative steps, the least likely it is for us to ever pull back. It's sort of like, you know, Tar Baby. And once you get one, you're fisted as you've got to put your foot in it and then the other fist, then the other foot, then, then you're stuck.
You, you, you have the right to pull back at any point. Given my discussions with you, I have a feeling that you have the backbone to pull back at any time.
Oh, I would.
Yes.
But it would, it would have to be justified by a significant reason. And. I, I'm a long way from being convinced that this is a benefit to the city in the long term. In the short term, it might be, might not be, I don't know. But in the long run, I'm miles away from being convinced that this is good for the city in the long term. And I hope we can get together and talk about it.
Happy to. Absolutely be happy to.
Any other? And any further questions? Any motions? Mr. May?
Mr. Mayor, before I make the form of motion, I would just ask the presenter, in the next instance, when you come before us. If you could outline. A few facts. And those facts would be that there have literally been hundreds of community development programs in the state of Texas. And that one size does not fit all. And there are varying benefits depending on the nature of the city in which these programs are embedded. I think that would help us and I think it would help our citizens realize that this is a collaborative affair. And so with that, I am moving that the city council authorize Bracewell LLP. To prepare a community development plan for a community development program for the city of Castle Hills.
Thank you, Mr. May. Second by Mr. Paul. Any further discussion? On favor? Opposed? With the record show, Mr. Gregory opposed. Motion passes three to one. Counsel, I just wanted to take a second to congratulate you all on taking another step towards. Promoting business within the city of Castle Hills. Obviously this isn't binding, but this is showing that we are willing to take the steps and have the conversation and the Castle Hills is open for business. So thank you all. Next up, we have 6.7, discussion of possible action on adopting ordinance number 2021-12-14. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Castle Hills, Texas, amending section 18-60. Of the code of ordinances to provide for the recovery of costs for certain building-related fire prevention. And suppression services and adopting fees for such services. Mr. Rappley?
Oh, sorry, Mayor. Just let me get this. I thought we were going to move up the CIP one. Sorry. Mayor, this, Mayor Council, this is in regards to amending our fire code, establishing a fire code. To offset fees. If you recall, Chief Ludwig went through. A list of fees that he was recommending that, that we adopt. Which is supported and is being done in other cities. And something we should have been collecting probably for a few years now. What, what we've done here is like we've done anytime when we've added or amended anything related to fees is to. Improve or change the fee schedule by ordinance, which we've done every year around this time when we've enacted new fees or adopted new fees. And so that is in the agenda. If you see the outline there, which talks about a set of fees as far as. Fire alarm modifications, fire alarm, sprinkle system modifications, hydrant sprinkler, and then fees for. Review. For our, our developments and review practices during a plan review that, that now the, the fire department can charge for. That is also listed in there in red on the entire new fee schedule. And so part of that is just adopting the ordinance, which includes these new fees moving forward.
Thank you, Mr. Rappley. Mr. Isbrand?
Mayor, counsel, I'd move approval of ordinance number 2021-12-14A. Ordinance amending the city's fiscal year 2021 budget to cover changes in revenue and expenditures and setting an effective date.
Motion by Mr. Isbrand, a second by Mr. Gregory. Any more discussion? Mr. May?
Just procedurally, shouldn't we not also reference exhibit A because that sets off the fees? We're adopting that too.
Which new fees are included in exhibit A? Yes, sir.
Mr. Isbrand, would you be amenable to that? Okay, perfect. Mr. Gregory, are you good with that as well? Thank you. Mr. Paul?
We're talking about what the fees will bring us in the future.
Yes, we're talking about adopting these new fees and then obviously the revenue that we potentially will see with this.
Well, one of the things I was curious about, maybe the chief can answer for us. At the November 13th meeting. We were given an impact on what fees were, what fees could have been. And I was a little confused because in 19, the fees were 79, 80. Under the new schedule would be 18, 380. Now, without going through the whole process. In 21, they were actually 11,171. But then under the new fee schedule, it only goes up to 15,000. So it seems to be, do you know what numbers I'm talking about here?
Yes, sir.
It seems to be a little. In other words. I would think that under the new fees, it would double the 11,000 or something, but proportionately it just doesn't, it doesn't pan out. So I guess what I'm wondering is, is. Are we doing pie in the sky on these numbers or what's? Again, I'll go ahead and show you what I'm talking about if you don't have that.
Yes. Go ahead, Chief.
You can see the problem at the three at the bottom. It just doesn't equate out to me. And that's why I'm asking the question. Seem like the higher you get now, the lower you anticipate proportionately. That's all I'm asking.
Well, it's going to be based upon the types of permits that are pulled. Some of the fees will be more, and so it will make more of a difference. If there's not a plan review that's involved or. So there may be more of an increase in the fees that are going to be collected if, if we.
in the fees that are going to be collected if we would have been charging those fees at that time. So really, it pertains to what type of permits are being pulled.
Obviously, we don't know moving forward what permits are going to be pulled.
Correct.
Because you put your crystal ball away, yeah?
Exactly. You know, we're hopeful, just in this past week, I went out and did 10 CBO inspections, which is quite unusual for one week. So they do vary.
The important thing is, if we get more fees, that means that we're doing more business for the city and more people coming in. Thank you, Chief.
I think, Councilman, that's again him going back from historical data related to permits and trying to determine what we probably should have gotten or received as a result of those services in the past, correct, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Didn't equate out and that's why I was trying to understand where we were going with that. That's all.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Isbrand?
Mayor, I'm, Council, I apologize. I moved the wrong motion. The letter A behind that confused me. I should have actually moved adopting ordinance number 2021-12-14, which amends section 18-60 to the code of ordinances related to the recovery of fees.
To include Exhibit A?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Isbrand. Mr. Gregory, your second still stands? Okay, no further discussion? All in favor? unanimous, thank you, Council. Brian, do you want to jump to the CIP one real quick so we can have our guests?
Sure, Mayor, absolutely. Take that on right now.
Give me one second, Chief. We'll get to you. 6.10, discussion of possible action on the city of Castle Hills 2021 capital improvement plan, phase one regarding streets. Mr. Rappley?